Encourage them. Their name and your glory we pray.
By the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, read them in.
All right, this is to read in Mr. Yakubowski's remote participation. Quorum is present. The Chair was contacted by Supervisor Yakubowski that he would not be able to physically attend the Board meeting today due to a planned vacation with his family outside Tampa, Florida. The Board needs a motion, call for approval of Mr. Yakubowski's remote participation in the meeting, and call for the suspension of the bylaws which require electronic voting to be replaced by roll call voting while Mr. Yakubowski participates in the meeting.
So moved.
Call the question. Mr. Ross is not here.
Five yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, you do have a consent agenda item this evening. It is only one item, so we don't have a slide. It is approval of a resolution for Saw Hill subdivision entrance to Section 4B to be referred over to VDOT for acceptance into the state secondary system of roads. This is a formality necessary for VDOT to take on maintenance of this improvement.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Would a roll call vote? Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mrs. Sebula?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next on your agenda are public presentations. Amy, do we have any one signed up this evening?
No, sir.
Anybody that did not sign up that'd like to speak? Seeing none, let's continue on.
Very good. Next is Board reports, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Skinner, would you like to present anything?
I have no reports tonight, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Benton?
No, this is...
Mr. Trampy?
No report.
Mr. Sebula?
Yes, I would like to ask Ms. Kathy Walker to come to the podium. She's going to give a little, very brief presentation on the Spotsylvania County Litter Thon.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. In the room we have, and we've distributed to the Board flyers, and they are out throughout the county regarding the Spotsylvania County Litter Thon. And we want to be sure to let the public know that there's a way for nonprofit groups to earn, to turn roadside trash into cash and earn money through this fundraising event which starts this Saturday and runs all Saturdays through April and May. This is Spotsylvania Litter Thon, and groups can pick up bags of litter along Spotsylvania County road sides and get paid $5 per bag for that litter. However, it is important nonprofit groups need to register with Spotsylvania's Litter Control Department. They can call Clara Mills at 507-7729 or email her. That information is on our website. They can also, of course, call myself, the PIO, or County Administration. We'll be sure to get that information directly to them. So please register. They can come. This is an opportunity for nonprofit groups to come and earn money for their group or club to help keep Spotsylvania County road sides beautiful. And by the way, it's also an opportunity for maybe a little sunshine and exercise while they're doing this. So we encourage nonprofit groups to take a look at Spotsylvania County Litter Thon.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Nothing further to report.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Yakubowski?
No, sir.
Okay, and the Chair has nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings us to our budget work session. It's the presentation tonight on the FY 2016 mid-year report, FY 17 budget updates, and five-year forecast for reserves.
Mr. Benton?
Apologize.
Sorry. Per counsel for the Spotsylvania, I'm supposed to read this. Pursuant to the disclosure requirements set forth in Sections 2.2, 3112 of the Virginia Code, I hereby declare that I have an interest in the budget transaction as an employee of Spotsylvania County's Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Management, and will therefore receive salary and benefits as a result of the transaction, as will all Spotsylvania County employees of which there are more than three, and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in public interest.
That'll bring us to the Finance Staff's presentation on the FY 16 mid-year report. Just by way of a very brief, high-altitude introduction, I wanted to mention to the Board that we're in a situation of excellent news. The staff will take us through in some detail. It is a lengthy series of reports that we have to go through this evening, and we would like to pause along the way at about every 10th slide if we could to take your questions. Overall, again, as I say, the news is good. What you'll see is a description on the revenue side of what happens if about 15 out of 16 sources of revenue come in just a little bit greater than projected, and what happens if a few of our expenditures come in low. And with that, I will turn it over to Mary Sorrell and Bonnie Jewell.
Good evening. As Mr. Taylor pointed out, we do have a number of topics to get through this evening, and we've purposely combined those into this one work session because of the timing, obviously, of you needing to have this information. We have the fiscal year 16 mid-year report, the fiscal year 17 budget updates, the five-year forecasts, and then some information about the county's reserves. First topic of conversation is the fiscal year 16 mid-year report. At this point in the year, the term "mid-year" is sort of a misnomer. We are definitely factoring in the latest data that we have through March, wherever that data is available. Based on what we know and the data we have available at this time, these are our best projections for changes in revenue and expenditures through the end of fiscal year 16. First, we'll look at revenues and then move into expenditures, and then there will be a slide where I combine, we combine all of these together and let you know where we stand in terms of what money is available for use for fiscal year 17 budget. Overall, we project our fiscal year 16 revenues to be $3.2 million or 1.3% higher than currently budgeted. This increase is spread over numerous revenue accounts and is not concentrated in any certain area. The adjusted projections are detailed over the course of the next several slides, and we've arranged them from greatest impact to least impact. I guess I should say, yes, that's correct, greatest to least. Personal property is expected to be up about $600,000. Delinquent personal property is also expected to be up about $600,000. And that is, if you'll recall, either last year or the year before that, the Treasurer has hired a third party to collect their delinquent taxes. And last year, we saw an increase. This year, we're also seeing that same increase. The railroad reimbursement is going to be on your April 12th Board meeting as a larger adjustment. The county owns the railway that runs through the industrial park, the Bowman Center, and we have an agreement with the users of that rail where we will maintain the track and then they reimburse based upon their usage of the track. We did not collect our reimbursement last year, and this year, we're catching up on that, and we also have some increased expenditures in fiscal year 16 that we're going to collect on as well. So that's the reason for the railroad reimbursement increase there. Real estate tax is expected to be up by about $300,000, as is social services revenue, and then our water and sewer admin fee, which is really the utilities fund paying the general fund for work that's done by the Finance Staff, Treasurer's Office staff, and other uses of general fund resources for utilities work. Business license revenue is expected to be up by about $200,000, and that's in line with the revenue that we received in fiscal year 15 as well. Public service corporation real estate revenue is expected to be up by about $200,000. By default, because our delinquent personal property collections are up, so too are our penalties, interest, and collection fee collections up by about $200,000. The bank stock tax, transient occupancy tax, meals tax, recordation tax, fire and safety inspections, and insurance revenue recovery are each expected to be up by about $100,000. Recycling revenue, we've experienced tonnage increase in recycling, but commodities pricing has been and continues to be on a downward trend. So we're expecting about $100,000 decrease in that for fiscal year 16. Sale of government surplus equipment is expected to be down by about $100,000. Communication sales tax and refuse disposal fees are each expected to be down by about $200,000. In terms of refuse disposal fees, we've experienced modest reduction in tonnage there within the last few months, and that's responsible for the reduction in the estimated revenue. You're going to see for both refuse disposal fees and recycling fees, an equivalent adjustment on the fiscal year 17 budget as well. And then miscellaneous revenue adjustments are about $200,000. Those combine for the $3.2 million increase in revenue projections for fiscal year 16. Regarding expenditures, we expect a savings of $1.8 million throughout the entire general fund through the end of the fiscal year, and that $1.8 million savings is about 1.5%. This is a combination of savings across many accounts and many departments, but the savings is primarily related to these four areas: vacancies and turnover of staff, utilities costs, and that's electricity, heating fuel, things of that nature, not water and sewer. Reduced costs for our jail contribution. Each year, we have a jail true-up based on our usage, and that's expected to be down this year. And we have a savings in our budget, we have an expected savings in our budgeted contingency funds. So in the expenditure section of this slide and the next one, what we've done is grouped the savings by general category. In general government, the expenditures across those items that I just outlined, the majority of which, again, is vacancy and turnover of staff, is about $500,000 in general government. About $100,000 savings in judicial administration. $300,000 each in public safety and public works. $200,000 savings in health and welfare. And then the contingency fund is expected to be about $400,000 not used savings. So again, those items total the expected $1.8 million or 1.5% savings in expenditures for fiscal year 16. And when you look at the combined revenue increases and the expenditure reductions, those combine for a positive impact to the fiscal year 16 budget of $5 million. Funding all adopted fiscal policy reserves through their fiscal year 17 levels. If we were to do that, we would set aside $2.5 million of the $5 million combined revenue and expenditure savings. Again, that fully funds the policy-level reserves, both the fiscal stability reserve, the budget stabilization reserve, the health insurance reserve. Fully funding these reserves with what's available in fiscal year 16 frees some ongoing funding in fiscal year 17 for other use, as we'll present in the fiscal year 17 portion of this presentation. Because we have already or are factoring the changes in fiscal year 16 revenue and expenditures into our fiscal year 17 budget, the $2.5 million projected to be available at the end of fiscal year 16 is one-time funding. Please be reminded that the appropriate use of one-time funding is limited to one-time costs such as paying cash for capital and should not be used for ongoing purposes such as paying staff pay increases or ongoing debt service. And now, this slide completes our conversation about fiscal year 16, but this information does play into fiscal year 17, so we're going to move to the discussion of the fiscal year 17 budget updates. I prefer if you could wait till the end of 17. We may cover it if you're okay with that. Okay, thank you. Overall, for fiscal year 17, revenue projections are expected to be $2.8 million or 1.2% greater than the originally assumed revenues in the fiscal year 17 recommended budget. This $2.9 million includes $600,000 in DSS and CSA adjustments that were previously reported to you on March 8th. The most significant change in revenues occurring since that time stems solely from personal property and the running of the NADA values, which occurred in mid-March. There are two adjustments that are impacting personal property revenue: a base assessed value that is higher than expected and a NADA adjustment that was lower than expected. When projections were originally made back in December, the base assessed value was $726 million. To that figure, for our fiscal year 17 recommended budget, we applied the three-year average decline in NADA values, which the average was 9% reduction. By the time the NADA values were actually run in mid-March, the base assessed value had increased by about $32 million to $758.3 million in assessed value. Additionally, the actual NADA run, which remember, we had assumed to be a 9% decrease, was actually only a 7.8% decrease. The combination of those two adjustments results in $2.1 million in additional personal property revenue being projected for fiscal year 17. Other adjustments that are shown on this slide, I mentioned previously that the refuse disposal and recycling revenue adjustments that we're experiencing in fiscal year 16 would tie to 17, and so those show up again here, and then we have about $100,000 in other miscellaneous adjustments on the revenue. For a total fiscal year 17 adjustment on revenue of $2.8 million or 1.2% greater than the recommended budget. Shifting now to the expenditure side for fiscal year 17, overall, expenditures are expected to be $300,000 less than assumed in the recommended budget. A nearly $500,000 savings was presented to the Board at the March 8th work session, the bulk of which was debt service savings stemming from an assumed reduction in the scope of work for the animal shelter. However, given comments that were received at that meeting from the Board and since then, and the fact that this project was included in the initial CIP adopted by the Board in November, we are adding the debt services associated with that project in its full scope back into these projections for additional discussion by the Board. So that is the $300,000 increase that you see here on this slide for the animal shelter. It just gets us back to where we were when we started the recommended budget for that project. Additionally, we've gone and looked at some, the fuel accounts, and we're expecting, we're experiencing in fiscal year 16 savings in fuel and factoring expected fuel price projections from the U.S. Energy Information Administration into our fiscal year 17 budget projections. Doing that lowers our projection of fuel costs in fiscal year 17 by about $200,000. And then finally, because the transfer to capital projects is a percentage of revenue, and revenues are increasing, the transfer of cash to capital increases by about $100,000. When we look at the combined fiscal year 17 revenue increases and the expenditure reductions, there is a $3.1 million positive impact on the fiscal year 17 budget. Additionally, recall that when I was talking about the fiscal year 16 budget, we factored there at the end the full funding through fiscal year 17 of all Board-approved policies. And doing that frees the $1 million in ongoing funding that had been included in the fiscal year 17 recommended budget for reserves. It frees it up for use on other ongoing costs. These two items combine for available ongoing funding of $4.1 million for your consideration in the fiscal year 17 budget. When we look at the combination of the adjustments that I talked about for fiscal year 16 and also those that I talked about for fiscal year 17, the combined adjustments are shown here on this slide. We have one-time funding available of $2.5 million, and allocation of that one-time money would be appropriate for one-time costs such as capital projects. The use of, for example, the use of $2.5 million in one-time funding equates to $407,000 in ongoing debt service savings. There is not a one-for-one match of the use of one-time funding and the savings of ongoing costs. In terms of ongoing funding for fiscal year 17, we have $4.1 million, which, if the Board so chose, would allow you to fund the recommended budget at 83 cents, which is slightly less than the 83.13 cent equalized real estate tax rate. So at this point, now that we've combined the impact of adjustments in 16 and 17 and displayed them here, at this point, we'll pause for your questions.
Mr. Skinner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going back on page five, on page five, you talk about mid-year budget updates fiscal year 216, and under general government, you have a negative $500,000. And you say that's from turnover personnel? And would you give us an explanation of that one more time?
Sure.
Because I think you said empty positions and turnover positions. Is that correct?
Right, vacancies and turnover.
Okay. Go ahead. No, please.
Also savings in utilities, like electricity, fuel costs, heating fuel, reduce costs for the jail, and then savings in the contingency. Actually, the contingency is a separate line item, so that doesn't factor into the general government that you're asking about.
My only concern is with the personnel, the turnover, and the vacancies. I've seen what it did to the schools, because when they left, we didn't fill them. So how is that affecting, Mr. Taylor, how is that affecting the departments and people that are needed? Are we staff to do the proper job? Or are we, you know, because of the turnover, are we filling them when they leave? Are we filling them? I mean, that to me is very, very important.
I think it's important to all of us, Mr. Skinner, and certainly the staff works, I think, with reasonable diligence at filling vacancies and keeping our staffing levels up. It's just that there are inevitably gaps when there is turnover, when you lose, when we lose employees, there's a gap in the salary paid to them, and these savings are the result of the weeks and then months of not paying people to do the work. But yes, certainly, the turnover is a concern, but this saving, savings does come out of it.
I guess what I'd like to do, and I hope the other Board members, we'd like to, I'd like to see, are there any departments that we haven't filled that we really do need to fill? I mean, you all are working great, don't get me wrong, but the fact of the nature is that you're probably working overtime really, really hard, and that's everybody. So I just want to make sure that we don't find ourselves to meet budgets that were not, like the schools did. When people retired, they either went out and hired two teachers for the price of the senior teacher that was retiring, or they didn't fill that vacancy. And I just don't want, I want to have the guarantee that we're not doing that on the county side.
Right, I guess what I want to say, Mr. Skinner, is that this is not a savings strategy. This is simply, so we're not resisting or dragging feet and filling the positions in order to save money, not that I know of. It is simply the natural consequence of not having people in place doing the job because, given the totality of our circumstances, then recruiting and filling positions is time-consuming and can be challenging.
Okay.
Mr. Trampy? Are you done?
Now, I got one more question, too, please. I think it has to do with that one-time funding you said for capital, capital projects?
Yes, sir.
So those capital projects could also include the capital projects for the schools such as school buses?
Yes, sir.
The one-time funding of school buses?
Yes.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Trampy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have an estimate, taking these updates into account, for the percentage growth in general fund revenue from 2015 to 2016, and then 2016 to estimated 2017?
No, sir. We don't have that at this time.
We can calculate that before you can get it back to you, but we don't have anything, we have not done that calculation.
And to... To Mr. Skinner's point, I think we should have a discussion with the schools whether they would prefer us to use the one-time money for their capital projects, or whether they would prefer us using the debt service savings and providing more ongoing revenue to the schools. So I think those two choices are at hand, and I'm not making a proposal at this moment, but I also wanted to mention the 4.1 million, after taking the three pennies off, still leaves us with a couple hundred thousand, which could also go to the schools. Now, we're, the two and a half million for the reserves, that fills the function, usually we've said, let's leave a million or so open for cash flow and such purposes. That two and a half million fills that function. Is that correct?
That two and a half million, if you were to use it for something else, completely takes to zero that million dollars. We would not have a million dollars. We would have zero. What we would have would be our fiscal stability reserve fully funded, and our budget stabilization reserve fully funded, and a 600-ish thousand-dollar budget contingency.
Right, I'm not talking about taking it away, but when I'm, when I'm giving away the extra 200,000 of the 4.1 million, I want to make sure that we don't need the million that we usually end up with at the end of the year because we have that fiscal stability reserve. Is that...
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. The combination of that and the budget stabilization, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I got a couple of quick ones. You know where we stood last year at this time, at mid-year?
I do. Last year, we were, we had a positive $2 million. But I will also say that last year, our mid-year report was our mid-year report, and I can't guarantee at that time we took into account the revenues and expenditures through March the way we have now, this year.
Okay, so...
This is really essentially our third-quarter report.
So just to clarify, and I, fiscal stability reserve is our 11% reserve, correct?
Yes.
So our budget stability reserve is the new one that we formed last fall. And based on what you're saying here, we funded at a full $5 million? Is that what it is?
Correct.
So there's $5 million unassigned. You would still have a million-dollar contingency of this 2.5 million that you have ongoing, or I think in fiscal fund policies, right? So if you, the budget stability reserve would have $5 million fully funded based on this.
Correct.
We would have a $600,000 contingency pot...
In the budget.
Yes.
In the budget. And then this million dollars we just talking about?
What that is, is the fiscal year 17 budget assumes that we used a million dollars of ongoing money to fund the fiscal stability reserve.
Right.
But what this is saying is, we have money available at the end of fiscal year 16 that we can use that money to fund the both reserves...
Correct.
At their end-of-year fiscal year 17 policy levels, and doing that with our fiscal year 16 money frees up that million dollars.
Right.
So when I'm telling you that at the end, when I'm telling you that for fiscal year 17, you have $4.1 million in ongoing funding, that includes that million dollars.
Right, that's all been taken care of.
Yes.
So we're not running another million dollars year to year to year to year. So we're not running another million dollars year to year to year to year. That's not a, another contingency that we keep.
No.
Okay.
No, it is not.
Because that's the way it kind of sounded. So I want to make sure that, that wasn't it. So $5 million in a budget stability reserve?
Yes.
And $600,000 is contingency? Okay. And then in the, based on the adjustments here, did you back out the animal shelter? You did not back out the animal shelter, the debt service? You're still borrowing it, and then you're paying the debt service of...
Correct.
$300,000 per year?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any other questions?
I have a comment, if I may.
Yeah, Mr. Yakubowski?
Yes, sir, thank you. All this information is very good, and I'm glad that we're on the, on the positive side when it comes to our budget. Four things that I'd just like to bring up, just as reminders, no motions or anything that I'm, I'm attempting to make, but just four things to keep in mind. One is our transportation fund. I know that we, in the documentation Bonnie provided, that 2.5 million needs to be transferred next year, and so out of the general fund to the transportation fund to cover ongoing costs, I think we need to keep that in mind. Another one is, is the school gap that we do have. I know that it is more than, than I would like to see, and so if we can cover that in some way, that would be, would be helpful. The other one, obviously, is our public safety personnel. Keep that in mind, that if, if we can do something to offset the loss that we seem to keep having year after year, especially with what Prince William recently has come out and said that they're going to start hiring 200 new fire and rescue folks, and I'm sure they're going to, you know, dangle some carrots down to our people in the form of higher wages and whatnot. So we need to keep that in mind, that we're going to be competing against that in the upcoming years, and with the volunteer base shrinking and our population increasing, we're moving more and more towards, towards the pay side. And then the last one that I would just like to bring up, and I, and I know all you know it's a passion of mine, and I, I do think that this is, with one-time money, we could move some of that over to the EDA. They are going to be revamping their big grant program that's not ready yet. I don't even know how much they're going to be asking for, but just to set aside a couple hundred thousand, maybe a quarter million for that program. If it doesn't go anywhere, then we don't have to spend it. If we don't like the proposal, we don't have to spend it. And then the other part of that, too, is in the EDA, or I'm sorry, in the EDT committee, we talk an awful lot about projects and different things to be advanced, and Tom's office is always looking for outside contractors to, to put forward with a, with a contract to then do a whole bunch of different tasks that have been thought up and put together. So that is another idea of one or $200,000 of one-time money that I would like to see at some point, and I will bring forward the idea to, to put it to the side. And again, if we don't want to spend it, we don't have to, but keeping in mind that these are economic development programs that, you know, will reap revenue towards the county, which is, which has been positive. So those are just the four I wanted to raise. Thank you.
Okay, if you want to continue?
The next item is the five-year forecast, and in the five-year forecast, we generally project the out-year costs of the current budget and the current CIP. In this case, the current budget, that is the base for this model, is the fiscal year 17 recommended budget and CIP that are updated to reflect the revenue and expenditure adjustments that we just presented in the previous slides. The forecast is meant to provide an order of magnitude of revenue and expenditures for any given year. We realize it's not an exact science, but it's meant to provide, again, an order of magnitude. While we make individual projections for each revenue line item, we make fairly broad assumptions as to the way in which expenditures may change, change based on judgment and on reason. For instance, we do not look at and analyze every operating account to gauge the amount each might increase in the future. Instead, we apply the three-year average change in the consumer price index, which is 1.4% in this case. Tonight, we'll present two scenarios. The first one projects the out-year cost of the fiscal year 17 budget, again, adjusted with the adjustments that I noted in the previous slides, to include debt service and operating costs associated with each project in the CIP. And then the second scenario projects the out-year cost of the budget and the CIP, but it excludes certain capital projects, and we will, we will outline for you on a slide which projects are assumed to be excluded. Scenario two is provided to answer the board's question as to how changes in the CIP might combine to reduce the gap in revenue and expenditures. But as you'll see, the changes that we've assumed in the CIP do not fully close the The general revenue assumptions we've made for the model are shown on this slide, and each of these assumptions applies to both scenarios. We haven't altered the revenue assumptions for either scenario. So you won't see this slide again. This applies to both. Based on the net new ongoing funding available for fiscal year 17, this model assumes the board will adopt the 83 cent tax rate. Given that new construction has averaged 1.3% for the past few years, we're assuming about 1.5% for fiscal year 2017 and beyond. The five-year average annual growth in personal property assessments has been 1.2%, and we're making that same assumption moving forward. We're assuming a constant level of state revenue for constitutional officers, offices, and that state revenue for DSS and CSA increase as those program expenditures increase. All other revenues are assumed to grow by trends, based on trends. And again, these revenue assumptions remain constant between both scenarios that we're going to present. Scenario one projects the out-year cost of the fiscal year 17 budget, again, adjusted to reflect the adjustments I talked about previously, to include debt service and operating costs associated with the projects in the CIP. It assumes a 1.4% adjustment to base non-personnel expenditures and a 2% compensation increase in each, each of the out-years. Since we have no set revenue sharing agreement with the schools, we've tried to come up with a formula that would give us some sense of what might be transferred to the schools in the out-year. This model assumes that we will transfer to the schools 100% of debt service to include any net new debt service associated with the school's CIP projects. We then back into a cost-per-pupil figure for all other non-debt-service school costs based upon the local transfer included in the recommended budget. Each year, the non-compensation portion of that cost-per-pupil figure is increased by the 1.4% cost consumer price index adjustment, the same as we're assuming on the county's budget, and the compensation portion is increased by an assumed 2% compensation adjustment, the same as we're projecting, or excuse me, assuming, on the county's portion of the budget. Those respective cost-per-pupils are then multiplied by the enrollment being projected by the school's staff. The model, in terms of CIP, the model assumes that since the J-RAMP project will not be ready to move forward in fiscal year 17, that we will make use of the 1.5 million we currently have on hand for the J-RAMP to reduce the amount that we are to borrow for exit 118 in fiscal year 17. We will then make the J-RAMP project whole by adding that $1 million, $1.5 million that we are borrowing to the fiscal year 18 project budget. So essentially, we're just moving funding that we already have to reduce our fiscal year 17 borrowing, and then adding that 1.5 million to one of the out-year assumptions. This action and the shift of the J-RAMP project out one year, as discussed in previous work sessions and at the Transportation Committee meetings, is expected to enable us to keep the $700,000 in set-aside revenue in the general fund for fiscal year 18. However, we will still need to transfer the $2.8 million in decal revenue from the general fund to the transportation fund to balance the transportation fund. All of those assumptions that I just outlined on the revenue and expenditure side combine to show this out-year cost of the fiscal year 17 budget and the CIP projects as they stand. You'll see we have about $300,000 to the good in fiscal year 17, and in the out-years, in each of the out-years, we have a shortfall. If we move to scenario two, and it's important that I point out, these are, these are not, these are not staff's recommendations to you. These are simply to answer the question, what impact on this out-year model might certain, certain project adjustments do for closing the gap? This is, these are just scenarios, they're not meant to be staff's recommendations or options. Scenario two builds upon scenario one by removing certain capital projects. What we have done is looked at doing only those projects which staff perceives as must-dos, and how that, how not doing the, the things that are perhaps not must-dos would impact the projected out-year gap. The list here on this slide shows which projects remain in the CIP assumptions made for scenario two. And then the following page will show you which projects are assumed to be removed. Again, the expenditure assumptions are not meant to be interpreted as staff's recommendations, but should otherwise be viewed as an indicator of how these changes in the CIP might combine to reduce the gap between revenue and expenditures. So those projects that would be included would be the facility asset management program, which is simply our major maintenance of our existing facilities. It would include all public safety technology projects, it would include landfill development, the projects associated with replacement vehicles, replacement heavy equipment, and replacement fire and rescue apparatus, and it would assume on the transportation piece of the CIP that we fund our local portion of already-approved revenue-sharing projects at Hickory Ridge and Route 1 and the exit 118 project. And again, as I mentioned in the previous scenario, we would apply the 1.5 million we currently have on hand to reduce our borrowing for fiscal year 17. The projects that are assumed to be excluded in this model, in this scenario, we would exclude the Hobart and Marshall Center renovations, we would exclude the animal shelter expanded scope of work, so we would revert to the $400,000 that we've previously talked about as being the, the minimal enhancements to that shelter. We would exclude the active gas collection systems at cells three and four at the landfill, exclude the convenience center paving projects, exclude the green waste composting project at the landfill, and all parks and rec projects other than replacing fencing. We would exclude the entire fire training center project, we would exclude the J-RAMP project, we would take out the implement, the funding for implementation of corridor study findings, and we would remove the $20,000 per year general transportation engineering consultant. Making those assumptions for excluded projects would allow us to make a transfer of the $700,000 in set-asides to the transportation fund in fiscal years 18 and 19. The decal revenue, which is, the decal revenue would remain in the general fund until 2020, as opposed to the 2018 that we've been talking about, at which time in 2020, 1.8 million versus the full 2.8 million in decal revenue would need to be transferred from the general fund to the transportation fund to balance that fund. Making those adjustments yields this graph, where we are essentially balanced and to the good by about $800,000 in fiscal year 17, and we have the shortfalls in each of the out-years, but not at the magnitude of the shortfalls presented in scenario one. And again, the point of this was to provide the answer to your question, what does the out-year model look like if you make some assumptions on excluding capital projects? So I'll pause at this point, so you can ask any questions you have about the modeling.
Mr. Trampy?
Yes, I just wanted to ask about the decal fee revenue remaining in the general fund until 2020. What's the downside of doing that?
The downside is the projects that are lost. The upside is, we don't, we don't have that hole in the, in the general fund that we've been talking about would begin in fiscal year 18.
Right.
Mr. Skinner?
Bonnie, on the, the graphs, both on page 19, where you're comparing scenario two, and then you go back to page 15, the question is, when you use these graphs, you're not, did you take into consideration that on some of these projects that we had of the bond referendums, did you say that's not increasing any taxes to the people? Because when we had those bond referendums, so this is zero going, zero increase to taxes?
It is. It's assumed at the equalized rate each year.
Okay, so therefore, when we put the bond referendum out, and we identified what projects would be what increase in a tax ratio, and that's what the citizens voted on, this would be completely different if we took a project that was on a bond referendum, built it, and increased, and I'm not saying the whole two cents or whatever it might take to build that project. So this is, this is showing us that we're not even considering at this time, this is zero from increase, this, like you said, equalization rate.
Equalized every year, yes.
Right, okay. But if, okay, because that's, that's what we've had a tendency to do in the past.
Yes, sir.
In all the bond referendums, I think the last, not this last one, the previous one was like 22 cents increase. I think over the five years we had it, we only increased the tax by three cents, or of all those projects that we did. Now, we didn't spend all the money either. You know, we didn't, we had some money left over on that first bond referendum.
Quite a bit.
Okay, well, I, okay, that, you've answered my question.
Okay.
The fact is that this is showing an equalization rate with no tax increase, and what we're doing is not doing the CIP projects, and we're deleting some of them.
Yes, in the scenario, yes.
In the scenario.
Again, not a recommendation, a scenario.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
And Bonnie, could you go through the assumptions that are in here, too? In other words, there's pay raise assumptions every year, is it 5% or is it 2.5%?
It's 2, it's 2%.
2%?
2%, yes.
And that's every year?
Every year, yes, sir.
What are the other assumptions? Because every, I remember this slide from going way back, it seems to always be the same with the projections, expenditures.
In, in previous versions of this model that you've seen in prior year's budgets, we've assumed, since we're talking about compensation, let's stay with that for a minute. We had assumed a merit, a 2.5% merit and a 2% COLA each year. We, the last time a merit pay increase was given was fiscal year '08. So we have assumed that, for this modeling purpose, that that is not likely to happen, but instead have assumed only the 2% increase.
2%, okay.
We have assumed that for the county's budget and the school's budget, and on the non-compensation line items, we have assumed growth of 1.4% each year, which is the past three years' average consumer price index adjustment. We've also assumed the existing debt service that we know we're going to have to pay regardless, and we're assuming any, any new debt service associated with the capital projects. So those are the main assumptions.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
A quick one. Bonnie, are the notes available online as well? Because these are very helpful, I mean, would...
The, the notes are not available online, but we can make them available tomorrow.
I think it would be so people could see the slides, and then actually, I mean, the notes are very good, it's easy to follow along with, so I think it's, be real helpful for everybody.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Benton?
In layman's terms, basically from these graphs, at an equalized rate, and if we want to keep on spending the way we're spending, or borrowing the way we're borrowing, we may have some difficulties in the future years.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smeuler?
Yes, Mr. Benton kind of beat me to it here. I was looking at the chart on 15 and the chart on 19, and yes, by eliminating a bunch of projects, we have reduced the amount of difference, but it still concerns me, as it does Mr. Benton, that in the out-years, we're going to be in trouble if we, if all we're ever going to look at is equalized rate, or we cannot come up with some other source of revenue. And I, I don't see how we can continue to, to budget in that manner in the out-years when we know we're going to be in trouble just providing basic services. This, this kind of concerns me, and I, and I think Mr. Benton and I share that concern. Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
I'd just like to share, I had the same thought on year one of the board, because... I'd just like to share, I had the same thought on year one of the board, because we got the same chart, and every year we continually, and I, and I think our finance staff, they get, do an outstanding job, I think their forecasts are conservative, and they've actually dropped that down a little bit, just with like the pay raise expectation. But we've still seen surpluses every year, so I appreciate what's happened, and I, and I think it's very accurate, but I think we should also realize what's happened in the past, where we actually have made budget, we have had pay increases, and then we've had surpluses on top of it when things actually come in. Not to disregard what you're doing by any means, but, but that's my experience since, because I, I remember year one seeing the same slide, and I've probably talked to Bonnie with, about it quite a bit, because it does seem kind of scary, but in reality, at least from the past four years, it hasn't, it's actually turned out okay.
Any other comments? Okay.
That brings us to the discussion of reserves. And with the combination of font size and lenses that I have here, I'm going to work from this location, if I may. The board had had discussion at several of our work sessions about our reserve magnitudes, and the purpose for them, and the rationale behind them, and we have some material to present on that subject matter. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends reserve funds equal to two months of expenses. Two-twelfths of our total expense are 16.7 percent. Now, two months of operating reserve is a very basic guideline, it's what you would teach your kids about household budgeting. Why? A two-month reserve is a cushion against the unforeseen, it's a protection against hardship. And the Board of Supervisors policy called for eight to 10 percent reserves from 1992 to 2006, and then set reserves at 10 percent from 2007 to 2015. For several years, all three major credit rating agencies have made comments suggesting that we should look at or consider increasing our reserves. All three agencies focused repeatedly on the availability of fund balance and our capacity to cover or address unforeseen needs or emergencies. All have asked which capital projects could be postponed or eliminated in order to free up cash if it were needed. They've shown concern about our capacity to adapt to changing demands. Before assigning a rating that investors will rely on, agencies want to know that our county can pay its debt service obligations even in the face of unforeseen circumstances. The object of establishing policy is to provide for adequate reserves and exercising the conservative discipline to fund those reserves, is to provide for the stable and sustainable operation of our entire local government, public safety, schools, and other services that we provide. The bond rating is an indicator of our capacity to provide stable and sustainable operations. The way to respect accorded to bond ratings as indicators is what makes a difference in borrowing costs for those with the highest rating. The difference in interest rate paid with a triple-A bond versus, rating versus a double-A rating is currently projected to be just under one-quarter of a 1 percent. So in the current credit market, the dollar value of the difference in the bond rating between double-A and triple-A is not that great. On the other hand, the risk of coming up short, experiencing a catastrophe, or finding our reserves inadequate, which can disrupt our ability to provide services and continue operations to our community, is a, is a significant risk also. And I need to underscore, this is not in the slightest all about bond rating, this is really about anticipation or a strategy to address the unforeseen and to deal with risk. Last fall, the Board of Supervisors adopted revised county fiscal policies, that was on October 13, and our reserve policies now call for reserves totaling 12.25 percent. And that's apart from a $2 million economic opportunity fund. Realize that our reserves are all-in reserve funds to ensure continuity of all county operations. The school division does not carry a separate reserve. Consistent with fiscal responsibility for our community as a whole, the Board of Supervisors maintains reserves that are recovery funds and budget uncertainty funds for the whole community, for everything that we do. Our reserves are calculated based on the total revenue in the General Fund and School Operating Fund. Our new policies call for fiscal sustainability reserve, fiscal stability reserve, equal to 11 percent of the General Fund and School Operating Fund totals. The FSR, our fiscal sustainability reserve, is our recovery fund. It's our community's emergency reserve of last resort that's set aside to meet critical unexpected financial needs of greater than $1 million resulting from a natural disaster, declared emergency, or other local catastrophe. Your policies say that this reserve is only to be tapped in the most dire of circumstances, and, and with a plan demonstrated for, demonstrating the need for the money, and how it would be replenished over time. Our policies also call for a budget stabilization reserve that equals 1.25 percent of General Fund and School Operating Fund totals. The BSR is our budget uncertainty fund, this fund is easier and quicker to tap into, and it's also expected to be replenished more quickly than the fiscal stability reserve. Why are these funds separate? Both the rating agencies and our own financial advisors have commented that it's prudent, good practice to describe and maintain these funds separately, because the fiscal stability reserve really should be available, usable, in dire circumstances only, and your policies actually spell out specific procedural steps to be taken, and plans for the use of the money to be developed and brought for you, to you for approval before that fund is tapped into. Of course, the $2 million separate reserve set aside for economic development is a separate matter entirely, that is not a recovery fund or a stability fund, that is an opportunity Key point is that even with the new reserve policies that are in effect at the 12.25 percent, we're still about 4 percent shy of the GFOA guidelines, we still have less reserve on hand than is generally regarded as prudent advice both for localities and even for households, that's that two months of operating reserve. Now, our reserves are not stagnant pots of money, they're fractional set-asides that reflect our cash flow, and because we only get paid twice a year, there are big fluctuations in our cash flow. Historically, our lowest dip, our limbo month, if you will, is April, when December tax payments are nearly all expended, and we're not yet seeing the beginning of payments for the first half of the calendar year. This graph shows two significant Aprils, 2010, when reserves dipped to around $800,000, and 2015, when reserves are back up to around 41 million, or about 10 percent. Now, with no more data than this to look at, the $800,000 looks pretty scary, and the 41 million looks comparatively good, if not terrific. $41 million is a lot of money, but what does 41 million dollars actually amount to? $41 million equals about five weeks of our operating expense. The school's payroll is a bit over 17 and a quarter million dollars, that's each pay, monthly payroll. Their other monthly operating expense is over 4.8 million, general county monthly payroll nearly five and a half million, other county general operating expense nearly four and a half million monthly. Total monthly expense is 32,000, $32,072. So $41 million is just five weeks. Now, I want to let you all know that I've experienced in my, in my career as a county attorney in another locality, I've experienced exactly what happens when revenues come in low. We're very blessed to be hearing this report from the finance staff this evening, that we're about, that we've come in high on a variety of indicators, and we're ahead of where we had expected that we would be. I've had the experience in another locality of exactly what happens when those numbers come in low, and when our revenues come in low, and expenses come in high, and operating revenue literally ran out before the spring tax payments were due to start rolling in. And I was asked as the locality's attorney to determine the procedures for securing a revenue anticipation loan, in effect a payday loan, for the locality. The locality avoided the necessity of the payday loan by literally contacting individual prominent taxpayers and asking them if they would voluntarily make early payments on their tax bills so that we could make payroll. The payments were received, the county did make payroll, the county stayed afloat, and but it was a very difficult time. I'm also aware of a locality that suffered a catastrophic failure in the form of the crash of its main operating computer, that was between the time that assessment notices went out and first tax bills went out. That was also a dire emergency for them, that had the governing body ending up discussing a mid-year tax rate increase on the real estate tax. That was not a popular concept among citizens who were already wondering what lack of foresight or failure of planning had left them in the vulnerability of watching the county struggling to recover their, their computer resources and get their tax bill issued. So those are just some illustrations, just from, from one career's worth of personal experience of what things can go wrong. There are other, and those risks are the sorts of things that reserves exist to address. But it's not just those risks, there are other threats that, and more traditional threats to be concerned with. Spotsylvania is vulnerable to changes in the national economy. Almost one-half of Virginians, it's 47 percent, I think, of Virginians receive some sort of federal support or entitlement payment. If you look at the population over the age of 65, that percentage jumps up to 94 percent. This is according to a 2014 J-LARQ study, the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission down in Richmond. Another risk to consider are damaging weather events that continue to increase significantly in their frequency, severity, and in the cost of recovery. But I want to look first just at a very quick snapshot of the, our national situation, just looking at nine basic indicators. Student loan borrowing, this is SNAP or food stamp assistance, the, this is looking at U.S. Treasury Department federal debt. This is looking at adjusted monetary base, and the rate at which we're putting out money as a, as a nation. The Consumer Price Index for healthcare. The labor force participation rate. Labor force share of income produced by non-farm employment, or otherwise known as the worker's share of the economy. Is look, the U.S. Census data for real median household income in the United States, and it's down again. It's interesting to note that Spotsylvania's 2014 median household income was $75,714, and that ranks 99th out of the 3,193 counties and cities in the U.S. for which the Census Bureau provides, provides such data. Next is Census Bureau data on homeownership. This may be significant to us, given our dependence on our relationship with the housing industry. And finally, this is just the graphic from that J-LARQ report that highlights our Virginia's level of dependence on federal payments, it's 47 percent of Virginians, or 94 percent of those over the age of 65. Shifting to a brief look at the National Climate Assessment, which is put together by a team of 300 experts, this graph is showing the trend in severe weather events, or extreme, what they call extreme precipitation events, and the real point here is that they are trending quite significantly up. Those events, these are billions of dollars in damages from extreme weather events. The key to see here is also the trend, consider the two points of comparison, Hurricane Andrew in 1992 was $16 billion in cleanup cost, Hurricane Sandy in 2012 was $65 billion. I'm not forecasting the weather, I'm not forecasting the national economy, I'm not telling you our computer is going to break down next week, and I am very, very thankful for the third quarter to mid-year projections that Bonnie and Mary have just provided, but this has been a rapid, high-altitude flyover of the rationale behind the reserves, which again are just about three-quarters of what the GFOA guidelines call for. In my mind, while this is a lot more about emergency preparedness than it is about bond rating or anything else, having five weeks' worth of operating funds on hand in April is a matter, in my mind, that we should all be concerned with, so I would like to leave the topic with this quote from John Jay. And again, I'm very thankful for the board's support that led to the adoption of the revised policies that have gotten our reserves to 12.25 percent aggregate, and for the conservative financial discipline and the, I believe, wise decisions made to fund those reserves.
Mr. Trampy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the monthly expenses, you included the school's payroll and, and other operating expenses. I'm wondering if anyone who was here at the time remembers if during the financial crisis of 2008, 2009, which I think is the biggest funding crisis Spotsylvania's faced in quite a while, did we transfer anything from our reserve funds to the schools for their operating? Does anyone remember?
The way it works, Dr. Trampy, is that the bills are paid through the county fund, so they receive their state revenue in, and when whatever they're paying out doesn't, the state revenue doesn't cover, we provide the additional funding, up until the, to the amount that we have approved as a local transfer. So yes, we would have been providing that, that funding to them throughout that process.
So these emergency funds are as much for them as they are for the county side?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions? Mr. Skinner.
It's not, it's, thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's not a question as much as a understanding. When you started your brief tonight, Mr. Taylor, you mentioned that it was only a quarter of 1 percent the difference between the double-A plus and the triple-A rating. And the question is, at what point, if we, if we lower these reserves, do we lose that double-A plus rating? Because there is a different rating, if I'm not, Bonnie, there is difference between just regular double-A and then double-A plus. We, we go up that ladder as we have, as we have increased trying to get to the triple-A. At one time, we, we were not always at the double-A plus, and over the years, we've only had one, now we've had two people that are rating us double-A plus, if I'm correct.
Yes, you are correct.
So I guess my point here is, even though between double-A plus and triple-A, there's only a quarter percent, if we should lose that double-A plus, what would the difference in the percentage be? And that would also be accounted for as far as what it would cost this county to borrow money vice, at a double-A rate, vice a double-A plus rate.
I think the big jumps that we're going to see in terms of changing interest rates are going to be... are going to be going from a AA to a single A, as opposed to the various levels of AA. I think there's very little, if any, adjustments, you know, between the pluses and minuses. But if you move from a AA down to a single A, you're going to see an increase in the rate.
Then I guess the next question is, what would it take us to do to actually go that far? Is that cutting our reserves in half? I mean, I know this is a prob, you can't answer it, but it's something we should have to look into, and we should know exactly what the consequences are if we should take our reserves down, and to what point that we might lose it.
That's a question that's very, very difficult to answer. I think it's one that we try every time we go to New York to get a better handle on in terms of what is the formula? There's no, there's no set formula that says if you have your reserves at X level, you're going to be a AA. If you have it at Y level, you're going to be a AAA. They look at so many different factors, the management of the county, the county's ability to continue its operations and pay its debt in the face of some sort of adversity, just various things. It's not all just the reserves. How much, how much cash to capital do we transfer? How many capital projects do we have that if something were to happen, we could stop those, you know, in a dire emergency, we could stop those in order to shore up the general fund and continue services to citizens and paying our debt? So it's a lot of factors. I'm hesitant to say yes will answer your question, because I don't think there is an answer to your question.
I don't either. I think that the point here that I was trying to make is that it's just one aspect in many of the issues that we cover when we go to New York.
Yes, sir.
And I don't even know what you would say as priority-wise. It's probably just one of many that we cover when we go up there, but it's something that we do have to be aware of.
Now, I do know that at least two, maybe three of the three rating agencies have weighted criteria, and I could get that for you, and it would show you how much weight, what percentage weight they give to the reserves in their overall look, but it doesn't prescribe an amount for us.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sebel.
Yeah, Mr. Skinner, I think one thing you need to be more concerned about is our financial instability that would occur should we lower our reserve rates. The fact that we try, we would love to have a AAA rating, this is great, this improves our, lowers our interest rate, but when you look at these odd years and you look at those two charts that we looked at, and you, and you start lowering reserve rates, I don't want to be a Detroit, I don't want to be a bankrupt county, I just think that is, that is just poor, poor budgeting. And I'm not saying you're recommending that, I'm just pointing that out to you.
No, I'm not recommending lowering anything. I'm, no, absolutely. I was trying to point out that there is a difference between the AA rating, AA+ and single A, if that's the case. No, no way was I trying to intend that we'd lower this reserve. I'm saying that that is, could be an impact on us, and the instability that you talk about is one too, absolutely.
And I didn't want to infer that either. Thank you.
Mr. Ross.
Mark, I have a question. You mentioned the national debt and the dependency, or the amount of, percentage of Virginians that get a federal grant. Was that, was that out of concern that the federal government might go bankrupt? That's how I took it. And I was just going to say, if that's why you briefed those slides, if that happens, it doesn't matter what we have in our reserve fund.
No, I understand that, certainly.
I just wanted to make sure that if that's where you were coming from, briefing those slides or...
No, not at all. Where I'm coming from is that if there's, disruptions to those payments can easily become disruptions to our communities.
Well, yeah, but disruptions to those payments would be a national government that's gone bankrupt, correct? I mean, that's, that's how I took it.
That is one hypothetical outcome, but that's not, I don't think that's a realistic risk. I think there are many other ways, you know, when we've had in recent news of the current administration, the last eight years, seven years, the situations of brinksmanship over the federal budget, where the, we've, we're just not going to get payments for several months. Now, whether that's disrupting our citizens' ability to feed their families or pay their tax bills, I mean, that, that may be temporary, but we need to continue to provide service to that same population regardless.
Gotcha. So Bonnie, I have a question for you. How many counties in Virginia have that AAA rating? Do you know?
I think it's about 10. I'll get you the exact number, but it's about 10.
Okay. And how many, I consider our current rating pretty good. Do you know how many have the AA or AA+ rating? Are we?
No, sir, I don't, but I'll check. You want just for Virginia or nationwide?
Just Virginia.
Virginia, okay.
And I think for the audience, I think we have done a conservative thing by increasing our reserves, but it sounds like since 1992, for 20, the past 24 years, we've been at 8% to 10% of our policy for reserves, and out of those 24 years, the lowest we got was 800,000?
I don't know.
Down to 800,000? I was assuming that because you had a 40...
During that period of time on that graph, it was 800. I don't know. Before that, it could have been...
Yeah, that period did not go back. That's just 2010 and 2008. We don't have data there back to the 90s.
So again, I want us, I want everybody to be clear that at least for the last 24 years, we've been at 8% to 10%, and specifically, I think since 9, you briefed it, since 2006, was it 1992, or 2006, we went to 10%?
2006.
2006, we've been at 10%. So our action last year was just to go one more percent to 11. I guess my concern is, we're still not in, what I would say, out of the, as a matter of fact, some of your slides prove that we are not out of economic trouble. We see the median household, median household income actually has declined.
Mm-hmm.
And so in my opinion, not, I like what we've done with reserve funds, but if it means we're going to increase taxes vice maybe come back to that 10%, which we've been at since 19, or since 2006 and before that, since 1992, I would rather see us come back to that 10%, and I don't think it's going to take our AAA rating away than to increase taxes. That's what I would, what I would throw out there.
So I was going to make a couple of quick comments here, and again, I'm not, again, I'm not a big fan of this, our new budget stability fund. Again, similar to what Mr. Ross said, 8% to 10% for X number of years, and we hadn't defaulted. So all of a sudden, we raised it 11%, I got that, but then we created another budget fund in the hopes of potentially getting a AAA bond rating, but we went from AA to AA+ at the 10% reserves. And having taken those trips, it's not just about how much reserve you have, it's how much debt you have. Debt is bad. They also like to see that you're willing to raise taxes, because raising taxes means that you can raise revenue. And that's all plus, that's all part of that getting from AA and AA+ to AA or to AAA. So there's a lot more than just sticking a whole bunch of money in the bank, which again, I've said, there are opportunity costs with that money. You know, we have $4 million into the bank, which we could have bought the animal shelter with and not incurred the debt, which would have helped the bond rating as well. So I think there's a lot more to this. And again, I'm a little frustrated, we're tying up a lot of taxpayers' money and even potentially asking to raise taxes when we have ample reserves. So I just want to point that out at this point, and the fact that we haven't defaulted, even at the 10%, 8% to 10%, I don't understand why we continue to sock away additional funds. Any other comments? Mr. Benton?
What would Spotsylvania have to do to get a AAA bond rating? Does anybody know? Or is that easily?
We wish there was a standard recipe or a formula. Yet there isn't. It's a matter of judgment from, by professionals at the agencies. There is no set or even predictable level of whether it's reserves or debt or any of dozen more criteria. They look at really our whole financial picture and the track of our financial performance and the trajectory of our management and our future projects, our planned projects. We can provide documentation or a presentation on how that process works, but I, and I wish it were simpler, but it's simply not. This is, this is, as I mentioned in the slide though, and I think it's fair to say that for a year, this, the reserve levels have been a consistent comment by the agencies. And again, personally, having had the experience that I have had of researching a revenue anticipation loan for a locality, I think that the number, the ability to operate is much more important than the numbers themselves. That $41 million is five weeks of operability. And I'll mention publicly, though we don't know the answer, I've asked Carl to look at what, you know, the, looking at the graph of the cash flow that also affects this. If we could collect revenue four times a year instead of two times a year, and that may take a change to the state constitution, I just don't recall off the top of my head, but that would allow us to take down some of the peaks in that cash flow chart and raise the valleys and make the whole proposition more reasonable. So we could have healthy reserves at a, I believe, a lower tax rate. If we could collect taxes four times a year, we'll have to look at the potential for that. Realistically, I don't believe that that's something that we can look forward to for FY '17, but it's something that we should look at and consider adding to your legislative agenda, because I think it makes sense as a strategy going forward.
One more question, well, actually, a couple. Are you able to provide examples of what, say, a loan of a, or of a million dollars at a single A, double A, double A+, and AAA?
Yes, I am. I can, I mean, I don't have that tonight, but yes, I can do that.
Okay, I'd appreciate that, just so I see what it'd do for our borrowing, since we're borrowing a lot.
I'll send that to you on a million-dollar basis, and then you can, you can extrapolate that based on however many million you want to assume.
Okay. As far as, as using our general fund, I know in 2008, I think we were just lucky, because I can tell you, working at the sheriff's office, it was an immediate, one day, this is what we're going to do, we're not going to, there is no overtime, period. We were cutting training, period. It was instantaneous, it was either that, and there was even talk about cutting positions. So I, I know how serious that day was, when you're looking at it saying, well, who in this room's gone, or how many in this room or this department's gone. So I just, you know, I think the reserve's very important, how much, we can debate, probably several more nights, but I just wanted to give you that. Like I say, it was a dire situation for us, I think, as employees, when you're looking at losing your jobs and having to take those kind of cuts.
Any other, Mr. Skinner?
Yeah, just to bring up, I think, Bonnie, the latest county to receive a AAA was Stafford. I believe Stafford just got one, and, you know, we always compare Stafford with us, because size-wise, I think we're about 127, close to it. The only difference I can see between Stafford and I is they've got about 21 cents higher tax rate than what we do. So they have more funding available to them, so by having that, that's just, gives them more opportunity to do either reserves and stuff of that nature. So I just thought that might help to understand a little bit.
Well, we prepare to Stafford, ourselves to Stafford quite a bit, but I, I can tell you, I don't think Stafford provides the services to their, to their residents like we do to ours, and keeping the taxes as low as we are.
Okay. Any other comments? Bonnie?
And the final slide for this evening is just to remind you of what the next steps are. On April 5th, beginning at 6:30, public hearings on the budget tax rate and CIP will occur at Cortland High School, and staff will be available beginning at 5:30 there. On April 7th, there is another budget work session, and it is at that budget work session that we're really going to request your direction on how to move forward with the numbers and with the tax rates that are going to be likely adopted on the 12th. And that is just so we can do the staff work that needs to be done to provide you with the final numbers and the final resolutions that you are to adopt on April 12th. So if you have any more questions?
No questions right now on what you presented tonight, but I wanted to bring back up, at the last meeting, I asked for the possibility of increasing the pay for our planning commission. So with little investigation, they make $4,800 a year, and there's no indication that that has increased since the planning commission started getting paid, so I, I'm not sure. So I wrote, I talked about possibly a three-year phasing to bring them up to $1,000 a month, or $1,200 a year, uh, $12,000 a year. And I just wanted to let you know that the difference between the 48, $1,200, $12,000 is $7,200, and we do that over three years, that's $2,400, okay, a year divided by 26, 26 payments over the year, it's like $92.30 increase per paycheck for them. And then obviously, we have seven, seven people, so it's about 100, it's about $16,800 over the, over a year, is what we're going to increase the budget by, $16,800. So I'd like everybody still, if that's acceptable, or at least think about it, because I certainly think our planning commission deserves it. They're the only ones that I don't think have had a pay raise, period.
Mr. Sebel.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment, I have nothing against the planning commissioners, they haven't had any increase, nor has the Board of Supervisors in quite some time. I don't know how far back it goes to the current salary that we get, but if we're going to consider one, I think we need to consider all. And, and the public needs to understand one thing, if, if we ever did make that consideration, we cannot vote ourselves a pay raise. The only, the only way that that can happen is that we could approve a pay raise, and that would be for the next time you're elected to office, or the next supervisors come on board. Just a comment.
I do believe that the Board of Supervisors did get a pay raise. They voted a pay raise in them. I can't be exact, but I believe I was on the school board at that time when, when they got it, when they did get it. So, and they, they brought it up to what we have today. Yes, sir. So I didn't look into that, because I was more concerned about people who didn't get anything at all, and, and that's really my concern. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. I think that's it, correct?
Will be your closed session motion.
So move.
Whereas, I'm going to go ahead and read through it here, sorry for the delay. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the county, specifically appointment of an interim county attorney, an interim deputy county attorney, and whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn to closed meeting for discussion or consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by such a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23711 A1 and A7, such discussions may occur in closed session. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
Is Mr. Yakovowski going to drop out?
Going to come back in. We're calling back there.
Oh, he's going to, okay. All right, so we need a voice roll call?
Roll call, vote still, yes.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Trampi?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Yakovowski?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Hey, Bonnie?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
A closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and is in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to convene into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Trampi?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Sebula?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
All right, and we do have a resolution for the Board to entertain in consequence of the closed session discussion, Mr. Chairman and members. It's a resolution of the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors to appoint an interim county attorney and interim deputy county attorney. Whereas Section five-point-four A and B of the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual states that the Board shall appoint a county attorney and deputy county attorney. And whereas the county attorney's contract was terminated as of March twenty-two, twenty sixteen, whereas in accordance with the aforementioned provision of the Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, and in light of the termination of the county attorney's contract, the Board desires to appoint an interim county attorney and interim deputy county attorney. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Spotsylvania, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors does hereby appoint Mr. Carl Holston as interim county attorney, and Ms. Dory Martin as interim deputy county attorney, effective this March thirty-first of twenty sixteen. So moved.
Let's call a question. Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Trampi?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Sebula?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We have a motion to adjourn. Call the question. Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Trampi?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Sebula?
Aye.
Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.